Welcome to this virtual version of the Manawa Board of Education meeting. Attending a virtual meeting may be a new experience for some, so please allow me to take a moment to review some procedures that will allow everyone to participate. When speaking, please state your name, address, and topic before beginning your comments. Some meeting participants are joining by telephone and cannot see the face or name of the speaker as shown on a computer screen. The public participation at board meetings, as per bylaw 0167.3, applies to this virtual meeting as well. Please mute your phone or computer microphone to prevent feedback and background noise during times when you are not speaking. There is a chat box found in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The chat box may be used to pose a question. The name or telephone number of the person posting the chat comment will appear on the screen. The board president will read the question aloud during the appropriate section of the meeting for the guests calling in by telephone. This meeting has an opportunity for public comment under item number 11 of the agenda. If you would like to register to make comments during this meeting, please type your name, address, and topic in the chat box at this time. All Board of Education votes will be conducted through a roll call vote. The meeting will be recorded. The recording includes anything typed into the chat box. And at this time, I'll call upon President Johnson.
All right, thank you, Dr. Opper. The Manawa Board of Education exists to lead and serve to support the education of all students focused on developing policies, retaining highly effective staff, acting on behalf of the community, and ensuring the sustainability of the district through open and clear communication. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Mrs. Pecky is absent tonight, so in her absence, I will call the roll. Mr. Seeger?
Here.
Mr. Holman?
Here.
Mr. Forbes?
Here.
Mrs. Pecky? Mr. Scheller?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
And Mrs. Johnson is here as well. Dr. Opper, can you verify publication of meeting?
Um, yes, it was.
All right, thank you. Um, late this afternoon, there was a resignation of Mrs. Ellen Christensen, our vocal music educator. Um, would someone be willing to make a motion to amend the agenda to include the resignation of Mrs. Christensen?
I make a motion to include that into the agenda.
And if you could please state who I is, Mr. Holman?
Uh, Mr. Holman.
All right.
Russ Holman.
I have a motion by Mr. Holman to amend the agenda to include the resignation of Mrs. Ellen Christensen, vocal music educator, as consented. Do I have a second?
Stand for a second.
Second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
You have to do it by roll call vote, I apologize. We're not in a closed session and we have guests on the phone. Um, roll call vote, Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye by Mrs. Johnson as well, motion carries by a roll call vote. Um, item 78, presentations, Huffman Planning and Design Project Update. Um, Ms. Beck, are you going to present for us tonight, or do we have Mr. McGregor, or both?
We have both. Mackenzie's gonna lead us off once she unmutes her microphone.
Hi, guys. Um, yeah, so a little project update for Manawa. Things are really moving, it's, it's really gonna turn out cool. Um, a lot of nice things are happening right now. Punch lists are the big thing. So we have punch lists going on this week and next week, a lot of areas are gonna be crossed off that list, which is great. We have furniture starting to be moved in and a lot of areas, like equipment is gonna be set up, so that's great. So there's gonna be a lot of cool changes made to the building. A lot of finishes are happening right now, so that includes flooring, light fixtures, ceilings are being dropped in. So it really makes the building come together, which is really cool. And I am really excited for the students of this school to not only see the building, but be able to learn in it. As like a recent student myself, I, I'm just so excited for these students, so. Matt, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, the, the building is really taking shape right now. Um, I just made a quick lap through before I got down for the board meeting and the spaces are really turning out really nice, like Mackenzie noted. Um, and it's a, it's a great step in the right direction. Uh, we have areas that we have already punch listed and got some of the school's janitorial staff into the building to start setting up classrooms. Uh, I know Bryant has been in the building multiple times, getting some of his technology stuff put in place and the, the furniture getting going, and the reception, uh, as it started today. Tech ed equipment showed up last week, so we're, we're really heading in the right direction, uh, as far as the agenda line. We, we definitely are gonna be right down to the end of it. We're continuing to, um, struggle with some manpower, uh, some of it related to COVID. Um, some of it just the amount of work load out in the industry right now. And that's gonna continue to be, and I think I talked about this at our last couple meetings. Once September hits, we're not gonna be going away, we're just gonna be shifting to more of a second shift, weekend shift to, to wrap up some of the final touches. I know Dr. Opper and I talked this afternoon and, um, that's gonna probably be what's best for the students and the staff to slip to, uh, switch to that second shift and get some of those items completed. Um, there may be items that are back of house and it'd be happening during the day, but for the most part, um, our work will kinda shift to more of an evening, weekend-type schedule, um, to get items wrapped up. Any questions, schedule-wise?
Are the science countertops gonna get in by the end of the, before the school starts, or are they still out in the ocean or somewhere?
Very good question. I got an update last, late last week. The countertops are scheduled to ship, um, in a truck next week, Monday. And about two days in, two to three days in transit, they should be on site, uh, Wednesday, Thursday of next week, is what I'm being told. Um, so that is positive to get installed. I spoke with the plumber this afternoon and he is extremely excited to get that work hooked up and completed before the students come back, so, um, that's, that's very positive news.
Yes, that's great, thank you.
Um, one common question is people drive by and see, we're growing green things. Um, but it doesn't exactly look like the grass at the golf course. Uh, would you like to say a little bit about how we're, how we're gonna get that addressed?
Sure, um, and as we started planting some of the grass this spring, summer, and, uh, continuing to maintain it, um, we did have some issues with some weed control. Uh, Falk's Brothers, our contractor, did acknowledge, um, the issue and I think it was shortly after we had, um, seeded especially the, the large vacant lot where the vacant building was. Um, we had a pretty large amount of water that came down and a lot of the seeds ran off, causing more of the weed growth to take form as opposed to the grass, of course. Um, so what they are doing, they're working with their vendor, they are gonna be coming in, um, with some weed control. They're gonna overseed, more fertilizer, um, that is gonna be taking place, um, not in the month of August, as the month of August is a very, probably one of the worst months of the year to, um, start growing grass with a lack of water. But, uh, they're targeting into September, after the students come back, getting these landscape areas cleaned up and looking a little bit nicer.
And how about our operational referendum? Um, I, I think we're nearing completion there, I saw the, the light poles going in.
Yep, um, Dr. Opper and I walked through the, the vacant lot or the, the new additional parking lot. Um, that was probably about a week and a half ago and kinda walked through there, the, the light fixtures are in, um, operational, and that is, um, really well, outside of the landscaping getting corrected, there is no open items on that, so that, that item is, uh, or scope of work is completed.
And so Wednesday night for Buildings and Grounds is gonna be kind of a, a big meeting because, uh, we're taking a look at, um, rough estimate of dollars remaining, um, in the referendum. Um, good news came in under budget, um, big applause for, for Huffman and for Matt keeping a very close eye on those numbers at all times. Um, so we'll be looking at that ad alternate list. Uh, Matt and I got together this afternoon and kind of refined that, we'll get that out when we post the agenda tomorrow. Um, but, uh, Wednesday will be the opportunity to talk about, uh, projects that fit the bill for the referendum, that, um, when we scaled back from the $20 million to the $12 million, um, some things that need attention, um, but didn't make that final cut, uh, that, um, will, um, possibly be asking you to consider putting back in with that money that's remaining, so. Um, I think that's gonna be a really fascinating meeting and hope that members of the community might join in to, to take a look at that. But, um, probably the biggest kudos is coming in under budget with, with a, a project of this size with a lot of unknowns, so. Um, good job, Matt and Mackenzie, thank you for your services in that department.
Thank you, it was a, definitely a, a combined effort between your admin team as well. Um, they, they did a great job, including yourself and the board, on prioritizing what, uh, what is the right thing for the community of Manawa and the school district. And I think, uh, a lot of good choices were made in that regard. Any other questions, referendum-related? All right, hearing none, I will let you get back to the rest of your agenda and I appreciate the time this evening.
And Mackenzie, when do you go back to school?
Um, I, I go back to school, so I'm, I'm finished working at Huffman, August 28th, and then I go back to school after Labor Day.
So this-
As we can.
So this is probably your last official board meeting with us, so we wish you all very well. And, um, I hope to see you again sometime soon.
Yeah, thank you, it was really nice working with you guys too.
All right, thank you, Matt, and thank you, Mackenzie, and best of luck to you, Mackenzie, in your continued study.
Thank you.
All right, announcements, contributions to the district. We had donations from Donald Long and Cynthia Long to the Manawa FFA, $25. Ace Thurman Sons Foundation, Inc. to the Manawa FFA, $3,000. And the Manawa Area Booster Club, Inc. donated a Simplofaster with a value of $2,649. But a Simplofaster is timing equipment for athletics, and it's quite a mouthful to say. Um, so thank you to each of them for the very generous donations that they have given to our district. So would any member, like any item removed from the consent agenda to be dealt with separately? Hearing nothing, we will vote by general consent. And hearing no dissent, the consent agenda carries. Public comments, we did not have anyone sign up that I am aware of, Dr. Opper, no one before I joined.
No, I am checking the chat and there is no one signed up to speak at this time.
All right, thank you. Then we are on to our recognition, which happens to be the FFA and this year's virtual 2020 State FFA Convention. Um, chapter awards from the 2020 State Convention were Connor Shoki, Hunter Went, Alex Wepner, and of course, Mrs. Cordis, the Manawa Chapter FFA Advisor. And Amber Feitzer has joined us tonight to talk about that. If you want to unmute yourself first, so that we're able to hear you.
There you go. Okay. So hi, I'm Amber Feitzer, I'm gonna be a junior at Manawa this coming year, and so State FFA, I went last year and, um, I got to compete in a Food for America contest with Kellan Kazurowski. And going there and being able to, um, compete at a state level, that was super exciting. And then to see all the kids this year be able to get the awards through state, um, that was just awesome that we got so many, even though we didn't have school for the end and we didn't actually go to the state, but, um, yeah, and I don't know really what else to say.
We do have certificates that are gonna be sent out to all of the students, so we'll get those signed and we'll have to get those in the mail, but, um, we want to acknowledge everyone for, um, their exceptional work.
Thank you, I wanna pipe in if I could too, Mrs. Sandy Cordis.
I was going to probe, but you go ahead, please, Mrs. Cordis.
Uh, so the three boys, um, that have the certificates, they were completers of the Wisconsin Youth Apprenticeship Program. And so they each completed more than 450 hours and then met modules by the State Workforce Development. And so they'll be earning those certificates that Dr. Opper was referring to. That's all, unless you have questions for Amber or I.
What's your favorite thing about FFA?
Uh, easily Food for America Day at the farm, cuz I helped host that last year at my farm and, um, I got to show my pigs to all the little kids that came. Um, but also another close favorite is the FFA Speaking Contest, because I get to see a bunch of people from all over our district, um, all there, and we get to compete against each other.
Awesome. Anything else that you can think of to add?
No, I don't think so.
All right, thank you very much, Amber, for joining us tonight, and thank you, Mrs. Cordis, as well, for being a part of our meeting.
Thank you, and we, we really appreciate the support of the administration as well as the school board to support our endeavors. Um, together, we are better and we appreciate all that you do to help us out.
Thank you, it's our pleasure.
One more question, Sandy. Oh, I was gonna say something.
Unfortunately.
Hunter or Alex, were they able to complete the driving contest, or was that, they didn't get a chance to do that?
They did not for the driving contest this year.
Okay.
So unfortunate, cuz we had two kids that were going into their senior, were seniors this year and they were, would have been, had the opportunity to return to state, but they didn't offer it due to COVID.
All right. Thank you.
There's, there's a chance that they might do it again next year and invite the students back that missed out on it this year, though, so. I have my fingers crossed yet.
And they do a great job, yeah?
They sure do.
All right, thank you. Dr. Opper, your report?
Yes, and joining us this evening from the Student Council is Kyle Khan. So if Kyle, you'd like to, um, unmute yourself and do a little bit of an introduction?
Found it. Um, so, I, I am Kyle Khan, so I am a Little Wolf High School's, uh, Student Council Representative today. Um, and I talked to a few of the students a little bit before the meeting, and from what it sounds like, is a lot of us have, I guess, a lot more questions than what we realize, um, on how school would be ran. Um, I don't know if I'm able to shoot a few of those your guys' way, if you guys can maybe answer those to the best of your ability.
Yes, this is a good time to do that, Kyle, because we're always curious to hear, um, what the stu- student body is thinking, so please do.
Okay, um, so I know that a lot of the students, they, they really disliked doing the online school that we had last, um, little bit of the 2019, uh, 2020 school year. Um, so a lot of them are, are glad that option, we are able to go back, um, as full-time in-class students, if that's possible, because it's, it's a little bit easier to learn. Um, and a few of the comments were about having teacher interaction and being able to ask questions right there, um, instead of waiting for afterwards, um, to do those questions. And then on that topic, I know a few of them asked, uh, Hortonville High School, uh, for their way of dealing with COVID is they were switching back to a block schedule. And a few were wondering what was, I guess, how were we limiting classes, uh, on interactions or what prevented us from doing block scheduling?
And for that, I'm going to, if it's okay, turn to Mr. Wolfgram, because the principals did the design of, uh, the instructional programs.
Hi, Kyle, um, I, I think that's a good question, and it, it's a little more detailed, but I'll try to encapsulate it as I can. First of all, when I first came here, uh, the school was under the block schedule and we knew that we had difficulties maintaining student engagement for a 90-period, 90-minute period. So if, if you didn't like online learning for 40 minutes, 90 minutes of the same content area was probably gonna be a little bit more challenging for you to stay engaged. And we wanted to be able to provide our teachers with the best professional development training to be able to go into a block scheduling. So we knew that we had student engagement troubles with block scheduling. Secondly, up times with scheduling, you have to increase the amount of staff that you have to have. And financially, we weren't in a position to add staff at this time, in fact, decreasing enrollment. So sometimes, we're looking at decreasing the amount of staff that we're having. Uh, third, we know that we would have to take a look at revamping our entire graduation credit requirement, because we're on a certain track. We just got done probably the last year or two, revamping the amount of credits that we had, as well as finding the LAUDA equivalent points for each one of those classes. And to flip-flop and turn to a, a block schedule on that would be apple cart upset everywhere. And lastly, we know that we didn't wanna change the requirements for graduation for our seniors, and by going to a block schedule, you severely limit the amount of classes that a student would be able to be offered in their final senior year. So then we'd be looking at a whole revamping of asking for forgiveness for credits that were due. Uh, we had that path, so I mean, it, it was very layered and very multiple reasons why we are not considering a block schedule, uh, for the COVID situation.
Okay. Um, and then another question about that, I, maybe these could be tied into, uh, each other, but they were wondering, what are things that are limited? Um, as far as, I know in B B classes, I heard something about daggered for leaving. Um, but I guess, are, what's gonna change that's gonna limit between classes of seeing each other? I also heard maybe about eating cla- uh, eating lunch in the classrooms?
Yes, I, you broke up a little bit, but I think I got the gist of most of it. In order to maintain the social distancing and the cohorts, we're gonna be doing lunch in the classrooms. And what we did is we trimmed four minutes of instructional time from each one of the periods to create about an extra 30-minute period, where you have the opportunity to eat lunch in your fifth-hour period class, and then you'll have kind of an additional study period. We did it for two reasons, also so that supervising teacher, cuz they all had lunch at the same time, needs to be able to have a 30-minute duty-free lunch. But I think we have some opportunities that might present themselves, where students might be able to use that as a virtual social time, as well as a study time, to be able to connect with their friends virtually in another classroom, having lunch. So we wanted to be able to, at least try to provide some sort of social engagement for kids that are either there, or maybe they're A or B day and they happen to not be there, and it's a chance to be able to see all of your friends at the same time. Um, I maybe missed another part of the question, what's another one that you had, Kyle?
Um, of what, uh, I kinda touched that, um, I know another concern was, was masks. Um, how, how masks are going to work, and they're required, I think, is what I heard, but there'll be times in which that we are able to take them off?
Well, according to, according to the mask mandate by the State of Wisconsin, by Governor Evers, it is mandatory for all inside, uh, purposes. Now, if we happen to have a gym class where we're able to go outside and guarantee six-foot distancing, that possibility exists that you could take the mask off at that time. But, uh, other than that, we would be wearing masks in the building. Obviously, you need to take them off to eat, but after one was done eating, one would have to re-mask according to the state mandate.
All right, um, and so that's, that's not affected due to Wapaka County not enforcing? Not affected?
That's correct, it's a state mandate and, uh, that's what we're, that's what we're bound by until the end of September.
Okay, and then, last thing, I guess, you guys basically hit them all, is do you know, now that we are doing, um, what, uh, what mandates a going back to normalcy? Or what are you guys kinda looking for?
Great question, and I don't have the answer to that, Dr. Opper does, even though it, it's still probably in formulation, so I will tune off, thank you.
Um, so I meet once a week with the county superintendents and Jed Wote from the Wapaka County Department of Health Services. And at this time, what we'd be looking at is, um, a sharp decline or decrease in the number of active cases in the county. Um, I also understand that the state is looking at coming out with some kind of an algorithm that we'd be able to use, um, that would tell us when we move from, um, more restrictive to less restrictive types of, um, health strategies. It, it could also work in the opposite direction. If, um, health situations became increasingly, um, worse, it would also trigger school closures, either by the classroom or the building or the entire district. Um, or it could move the other way, that health conditions improve dramatically, which is what I'm hoping for. And, um, that way we can, uh, start to ease some of those, um, restrictions that we currently have, um, all based on the guidance, um, right now at the local level. But like I said, I do believe, um, that we're supposed to hear something the next few days, hopefully this week, um, from the State Department of Health, um, issuing new guidance, uh, to all of us, uh, that might include sports as well as our academic programs. So there, there's an awful lot up and where there are many unanswered questions. Um, we're all on the edge of our seats waiting to hear, um, what those recommendations are going to be.
Okay, so there's- So there's just not a solid line yet in place for if, why, if or when we go back to normalcy?
Um, no, and it's, I'm not even sure, to be frank, that they've defined what the new normal is going to be. Um, but it's not gonna look like fall 2019. I, that's something that I, I think is quite a ways off for us at this point in time.
Well, all right, um, I'm sure that on behalf of the students, well, we thank you for at least allowing us that, to have the opportunity to be in school all the time. Uh, for some kids, it definitely increases, um, the ability to learn, um, and thank you for answering our questions, we appreciate it.
Trust me, all the teachers I've talked to really miss seeing all of you. It's nice on the screen, but it's nothing like being in person. Trust me, all the teachers I've talked to really miss seeing all of you. It's nice on the screen, but it's nothing like being in person. So we're eager to see you again too, too, on September eighth.
Definitely.
Brief legislative update, um, and again, some of the uncertainty, we've talked about just a little bit, but we are expecting to hear now from the State Department of Health, as I just mentioned. They really haven't tipped their hand as to what type of new guidance is coming. Uh, but they are expected to speak both on fall sports as well as, um, the academic programs, uh, for public schools in the state. I'm not sure if it will also apply to private schools. Uh, so we are eagerly watching for that. Um, last week I was on with a meeting, uh, State Super Assistant Superintendent Mike Thompson. Uh, he continued to talk about, um, additional guidance coming out from the department as well uh, to try to help us to adjust to, um, how do we effectively run schools? Um, WIAA came out with some new information on fall sports, uh, so we'll be sharing that. Uh, the CWC has a meeting later this week, so, um, really it will, I think the conference is going to influence what we do um, as a district in terms of, um, hopefully, uh, maintaining the fall season as is. But again, the, the WIAA guidance, um, has adjusted slightly and would offer options for fall sports to begin either in the fall or in the spring of the year. Uh, again, we'll probably want to reflect on what the conference is doing, because, um, we wouldn't have anyone to compete with if we don't stick with the conference. Uh, the DPI has been polling, uh, districts across the state about their reopening plans. As you know, the county uh, has stayed consistent. Uh, but statewide, um, you see a great degree of variance in terms of, of what districts are doing. Um, then I wanted to give you a press release that came out just today uh, from the Wapaka County Department of Health. So we have the distinction right now of being in third place in terms of the number of active cases in the county. Uh, New London is in first place right now with Wapaka in second and Manawa being, uh, in third place with Clintonville not too far behind in fourth. Um, not necessarily the, the place you want to be. But that's what prompted this, uh, press release. Uh, again, Mr. Wote, uh, put together a press release asking for people to give strong consideration to the fact that, um, there is a rising number of cases. Um, I believe he indicated that there were fifteen new active cases over the weekend with a trend of five-pointing percent, um, positive cases in the county. Uh, they are looking at, uh, September fifteenth uh, for an opportunity for testing at the fairgrounds from nine AM to five PM with an available seven hundred fifty tests. Um, they do believe they're going to have, um, an opportunity to register online. So let me share the screen with you for just a moment, so you can see that press release. And that should be coming up on your screen here shortly. So what we see here is, um, the places that are um, most frequently of concern. Uh, those are listed under Work Sites and Other. And more importantly, the request is uh, in order to help everyone get back to the new normal. Um, as Kyle put it, fewer restrictions, more opportunities. Mr. Wote is asking for a change in behaviors. And so he talks about avoiding gatherings, particularly those being held indoors. And, um, ask people to stay home when they have symptoms, and finally to wear those face coverings. We do not have a monthly enrollment report. There are a lot of changes going on right now. There's a lot of movement. Uh, we have, uh, several students registered just today, um, so uh, it's looking, uh, strong. I, in fact, Ms. Brower was just mentioning that third grade seems to be blossoming with new enrollees, and that's one of our largest grade levels. Um, curriculum, not a lot happening just at the moment. Um, we'll probably see a little more activity as we get into the school year and have those Wednesday afternoon work sessions, uh, with our staff. Um, there is an opportunity for board members, and it was in your packet, the online fall regional meetings, and those meetings are always extremely interesting. Um, I would encourage you to consider, um, joining. Um, you're welcome to join any of the meetings that are online, but, um, I believe our region is meeting on October sixth, if I'm not mistaken. So looking forward to, um, having you do that. And then finally, the block of rooms has become available for the two thousand twenty-one State Education Convention, um, typically held in Milwaukee. Um, that's January twentieth through the twenty-second. Um, so they're hoping by then, conditions have improved and that they will be able to have the convention um, as they historically have. If any board members are interested in attending, uh, please do let me know or Stephanie know, um, and we will be sure to secure a room. And the backup plan, I'm sure, would be a, a virtual meeting. And perhaps we could gather somewhere in the district, maybe in the boardroom, um, and participate in a virtual um, convention if we're not able to go down to Milwaukee. Uh, but you'll remember last year, we had a pretty amazing time together. Um, and we presented at state conventions, so I'm really looking forward to getting back there and hearing the great ideas from uh, across our state of Wisconsin. And unless you have any questions, I think that is the report for this evening.
All right, thank you, Dr. Appert. School operations and directors reports. Um, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Brower or Mr. Wolf Graham regarding any of their reports? Mr. Wolf Graham or Ms. Brower, do you have any comment to make regarding your report?
Go ahead, Danny.
Well, I think, um, don't think I have any right now, unless you want me to go through the handbook changes that we added to. Sorry, I'll turn on my camera. I feel weird that I'm off. Um, do you want me to go through the handbook changes now or when that comes up in the agenda? The student handbook changes?
Um, it probably would be more, more pertinent and question everyone's minds if we did it when we go through the changes.
Okay, that's the only comment that I have.
Okay, thank you.
The time in just to kind of give an update to the board as far as the process is, as we are dividing the AB cohort situation. It was our initial goal to try to have that out to parents by the end of last week. Um, that did not happen, uh, primarily because we had seventy-five families or student parent groups uh, at the high school alone and fifty, uh, as of just this moment. I just did a head count that have still not responded as to what their preferred mode of instruction is. So I sent a, an evening or a Skylark reminder out to parents to please get us your, your selected mode of instruction, because um, as these different things come on in, it, it has a, a domino effect on the numbers. Well, we, we moved forward, and Ms. Connolly and myself, mainly Ms. Connolly has done a lot of the lion's share of the work. We moved forward with splitting the school up alphabetically, A through L, A through M, and A through N for every single class, and did a head count if everybody came. And I think we are very close to being able to send out something. I think the new target date is Wednesday. We have letters composed for Cohort A, letters composed for Cohort B. And our sweet spot is trying to find that placement of students where some of our classes were larger, so we're looking at fifteen to sixteen kids per class. Um, I think that is dependent upon a few other factors that we were working with schedules. As we had said in my, in my memo, the, um, articulated well, that those kids need to come every day. We tried doing special cohorts to facilitate the instrumental high school music department by cohorts of family of instruments. We also took a look at our at-risk population, our special ed population, and our failure to thrive uh, population. So as we put these all together, you know, they ebb and flow as far as trying to find that sweet spot of, of, uh, numbers. So the new goal is for Wednesday, and we figured, let's move forward with at least assigning those cohorts. If those families came in after the fact and they said, okay, they want to go synchronous, or we want to go blended, that's one less student that we have to potentially worry about if we've already found our sweet spot, if everybody showed up. So if that makes sense, that, that's where we are, and then we will set forth looking at trying to get as many meetings in as possible to be able to deal with, uh, the blended request, because there's a little bit more of a process to that. Right now, we have about twelve students at the high school asking for synchronous, about twelve students for blended. Um, at the middle school level, it's a little less. We only have, I think, two looking at, uh, synchronous and several other blended. The rest, to this point that we know of, are requesting in-person. So, um, that's where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf Graham. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wolf Graham? All right, thank you, Dan. All right, business-related reports. Did anyone have any questions for Mrs. O'Brien?
And Mrs. O'Brien is having a problem, so, um, I would take note of the questions that we have, and she'll get back with us.
All right, on to directors reports. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cobberubius? And Mr. Cobberubius, did you have any comments at all?
Uh, no, ma'am, not right now.
All right, thank you. Board comments. Did any member of the board have comments that they wish to share publicly? Okay, on to committee reports. Does anyone have any questions for any of our committee chairs? I have no unfinished business this month, so on to new business. Item twenty-one A. Um, as per policy zero one three one point one bylaws and policies, consider approval of the Title IX regulations.
Bruce Scheller. All right, Bruce Scheller, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approved policy zero one three one point one bylaws and guidelines to allow approval of the Title IX regulations and policy and administrative guidelines to follow as a matter of unusual urgency as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Russ, Russ Johnson, I second that.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're going to again vote by roll call. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mr. Pecky? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Pecky is asked, and Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries. Item B, consider approval of policy and administrative guidelines, twenty-two sixty-six.
Ru- Russ Johnson, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approved policy and administration guidelines, twenty-two sixty-six, Title IX regulations as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
Second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call votes. Item C, consider approval of employee exit interview survey.
Stan Forbes, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approves the employee exit survey and as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Forbes. Do I have a second?
Bruce Scheller, second.
Second by Mr. Scheller. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Uh, before we move forward with the motion on item D, this would be the student handbook changes. Um, Dr. Appert, you put it up on the screen. Ms. Brower, this would be where we get to talk about it, if you would be kind to go ahead.
Okay, so what you see on the screen, I believe, is the elementary, or is it the high school? Oh, yeah, all three handbooks had exactly the same changes. All of these changes are due to COVID. So the first change that we did is that in the visitor section of each of the handbooks, we added a paragraph about how we are not allowing essential, unessential visitors in the buildings, and then we added that sentence, um, at the end, and we left in the old language and said that when the restrictions are lifted, then we'll go back to, um, allowing visitors. So that is the first one. Any questions on that, on visitors specifically? All right, hearing none, go on. Um, the next ones, the next sections are all on dress code. Um, and the dress code is, um, that we wanted to make sure the face coverings was defined and clear in all of the handles. So we did remove the word headwear, um, from the first section that talks about hats, and it lists the things, headwear and backpacks. Remove both of those because we are allowing backpacks. Um, because we can't use lockers at the moment. And then we wanted, we removed headwear because it was pretty loose, and we felt like that could be considered a face covering. Remove those two things. Um, and then we, thank you for scrolling down, and then we defined what a face covering was, and what we did was we took out of um, the emergency, the language right out of, um, the, now I can't think of the emergency, not the guidelines, but what came from, from, um, Evers. We have, we copied and pasted what a face covering is, so that it's very clear. We wanted to make sure too, because it, it clearly says regular face shields are not considered face covering. And that was a question that we were getting from parents. So those, that, everything is word for word in all three handbooks. Any questions?
Yeah, are we gonna have, are they gonna have the ability to put jackets and hats somewhere else, or? Because when, I guess, when winter comes?
Right, and, um, right now, I can speak for my building at the elementary school. We are tossing around that possibility. Right now, Right now, all backpacks are going to be in the rooms. Some teachers have, if they have a little bit extra room, they talked about having places to hang them in the back and like, in a, on a wall. And then a lot of them are just having them put on the back of the chair. And the reason for that is, is we don't know if we go, send kids home from school on Wednesday, that they'll all return on Thursday. So we want all of them to have everything, taking everything that they could possibly need to 100% online the very next day. And to do that, they're going to need everything in the backpack. And we thought, except for the elementary school, a lot of the teachers have pockets on the back of the kids' chairs. And the pockets are like all their folders, their writing folder, and their different folders. But we're gonna, right now, we're gonna try putting those backpacks on the back of the chairs so that kids could just kind of turn and grab them out. We've talked about the possibility of when it comes to like, snow season and if we're still in this situation, then we talked about possibly having rotation of going out. The teachers would have, you know, every four lockers, a student can go out and put their stuff in or go get their clothing if they need to change. We're tossing it around right now. And we're gonna see what happens when we get closer to the year. But at the moment, they will not be used in the elementary. Now, Mr. Wolfgram, have some thoughts about his building?
I know that in discussion with some of the CWC principals, they are looking at not using lockers with the exception of twice. Once in the morning, you go to your locker and you hang up your coat. And then at the end of the day, you come back and you pick up your coat. But there's no locker use in between. You get an AM visit and a PM visit. Now, that's kind of new right now. I think that as the pandemic continues to evolve, will help guide our process and our thinking along with Jed at the county. Obviously, all of these changes of the plan would need to be vetted by U legal counsel, insurance liability carrier, and Wapaka County Health Department. So not every single one of our schools is in Wapaka County. So those rules will, obviously, if we change anything, you will know about it. But as of right now, the kids are going to be taking them to class for the fall. And we'll take a look and see how all things start to develop as we get into the colder months.
Danny, I have a question. I think Paul's put out a video of they're going back to school and I noticed all their lower grades, anything where it's at a table. They all have plexiglass, kind of like a station, all the way around the table. At our lower grades, are we doing anything along those lines or no?
At the moment, no. We are able to separate the desks in enough, enough distance right now. And with face coverings, with kids wearing face coverings, we didn't, we kind of felt that that was a little bit of overkill at the moment. Now, that's an exception to, there are some populations that will have plexiglass. Speech, our two speech therapists will have plexiglass in their offices because they have to be able to see the students' mouths. And the students have to see theirs in some cases. When you're talking about articulation and like producing sounds and having your tongue in the right place. And some of the, and the elementary, no, not the elementary, special education teachers will have access to some plexiglass because some students aren't able to wear masks or just different situations for our kiddos in those areas. We've got some plexiglass, but we don't have any for classrooms at the moment.
All right. Maybe Melanie just wants to watch their video because I thought it was a nice video of what they plan on doing to go back to school, so maybe.
We've seen a lot of that. We, I know I have seen a lot and my teachers have sent me Pinterest pictures of different situations. I'm being cautious with what we're spending our money on at the moment because there are things, more and more things are coming out. As we get deeper and deeper into the plans, we're finding needs of other pieces, like even markings on the ground and spots for gym class and a lot of different things. And like lap desks so that they can be outside. We're kind of, I'm being a little cautious on how we're spending because we only have so much of the grant that we got for it. So I'm being as cautious as possible at the moment.
Yeah, one more quick question. So if we amend the handbooks for the face coverings, I mean, once September 28th or things have changed, we're just gonna go back in and amend them again? Is that the plan or?
We can. We also may leave that, well, yeah, it's so hard to know when it's, everything is gonna change. And we may need to feel like we need to leave it in a little bit longer once the mask, because, once the mask mandate is lifted, because we may still have kids that will, and families that will want their child to wear a mask. So we're gonna wanna leave that kind of, we may wanna leave it in the handbook for a little bit longer to make sure that it's in there that kids can wear them if they.
Well, yeah, I mean, if they choose, they'll be able to wear them whenever they want anyway. But we're still looking at, 80% people didn't want their kids to wear masks regardless. So I think it's, I think it's kind of tough to put it in there.
All it was. All we're seeing, all we're seeing right now in the handbook is that it's allowed. Prior to, it was written, it seemed like maybe it wasn't allowed when it was talking about head covering, you know, everything. So it really is just saying it's allowed in there. It is not saying that they have to wear it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
And I think, Luke, any decision that comes forward from the board, there's usually a clause at the end of this signature page that any decision that the Board of Education makes will supersede that it's currently in the handbook. So we don't have to constantly, you know, we will certainly play catch-up. Dr. Appel, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Okay.
I suspect there are going to be numerous adjustments to handbooks and/or other documents in the district as we move along. You know, which is one of the caveats we put at the end of the plan that everything's subject to change. Kind of like the state DHS. We expect new information coming out this week, but we don't yet know what it contains. And we don't know if that's going to change anything that we need to do here at the local level. So there are a lot of moving parts every day. I'm contemplating, contemplated putting together kind of a district-wide narrated program to put on the website. But by the time I get done recording it, it could be irrelevant. So I'm thinking I'll wait a little closer to the time of school opening because it will hopefully be as accurate as possible by the time it's published. Excellent questions, though. Lots of moving parts.
All right, are there any more questions regarding the proposed changes to the handbook? If not, then I would ask for a motion to consider approval of those handbook updates.
Bruce Scheller, I move that the Manual Board of Education approved handbook updates as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, second.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries. Next meeting dates, we have August 19th. Buildings and grounds at 5:30. August 25th is the Ad Hoc Recognition Committee at 5 o'clock. August 25th is finance at 5:30. September 8th is policy and human resources at 5 o'clock. The curriculum committee meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled. And Dr. Appel, you did mention that we may need to have a special board meeting as well. Did we wish to schedule that at this time?
Would that be helpful to the group if you put, made a reservation on your calendar just in the event we need to make any adjustments? Again, I'm thinking about that state DHS order that we've heard is coming out. Once we know what it says, we may want to discuss that. I would also expect, since we had a resignation, there may be a teacher staffing for vocal music. So I'm thinking if you want to slide something closer to the start of school.
Any thoughts? So do we, you know, if we don't need the meeting, obviously, we don't have to have it? Or do we prefer to have Mrs. Flynn call us at a later time? Or what is everyone thinking?
I'm seeing you do have a finance committee meeting on August 25th. Sometimes you do a companion meeting. So.
There's two meetings already that night.
Oh, okay, good point.
Is the 31st too late? To do? Or would that be early enough before school starts?
That would, school starts on September 8th. I do, that would be ample notice for, it would give Mr. Wolfgram an opportunity to conduct the two levels of interviews that we do for teachers and still get that contract in the hands of a teacher before school starts on the 8th. That is the week of in-service. So if we did approve a teacher on that date, we'd probably still have that person start work that day. The Monday, the 31st is a full day of in-service. If you're, as long as you're comfortable allowing somebody to begin work before you've given the final stamp of approval.
I think the 31st, ah, well, we're coaching. I have a cross-country meet that night, so, in Iola. So I wouldn't know if I'd be back in time. But it's only one person, so.
Do, do we have meets?
Yes.
Tony, that's the first meet.
Oh, that is the first meet, okay.
Unless we lined up with Pittsville, but on the 27th, but.
What about the first Tuesday?
I'm showing an FFA alumni meeting that evening, which affects a couple of us, a few of us. That is, that is the correct date, isn't it?
Yes.
But that'd be like the 7th, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah.
If we had a meeting, it probably would take two awful long. Was that week two later? Would it be preferable to do it the week before?
Week before is next week.
Yeah, I, I think, I think either the 31st or the 1st would be good. You're up bright and early for the all-district in-service on the 2nd. You're all invited. We're gonna have a really compelling speaker.
What do you guys think? Do you have a preference between the 31st or the 1st? Does Monday or Tuesday matter?
I prefer, I prefer not Mondays. I had to cut my guy short today because of this meeting. I don't like to do that too often.
Okay, so how about the 1st? Then that, we don't have to worry about your conflicts or Bruce's conflicts. Start time? 6:30, 5:30, 5:15. What's everyone's pleasure?
5:30 is fine for me, I guess.
September 1st, 5:30?
What about you, Luke?
Yeah, I'll make it work.
It should be fine.
Makes no difference to me.
Okay, September 1st, then, at 5:30. I do not believe that we have a need for a closed session following this meeting. So I believe that we can just go ahead and make a motion to adjourn, please.
Bruce Scheller, I still move.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
Second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries at 8:04 PM. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good one.
Good night, everyone.